Um, roll call please.
Here.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, council, thank you for having me. This is a two-parter, I wanted to give you an update on our inventory that we've been working on for the city's water service lines and then justification for the loan application itself. So, the EPA's lead in copper rule required public water systems to inventory all of the water lines, the water service lines in their systems. And that water line inventory for us is due to KDHE by October 16th this year. So, we're working on the final quality control checks of it right now. We plan to actually submit, I think on the 14th, just in case there are some issues uploading the files. But we have completed the data collection for the initial submittal and our, our city workers actually began collecting data in 2021 on the water lines and we collected information on 10,000 out of the 17,000 water service lines in the city's network. And that was sufficient to actually allow this third-party consultant that was contracted by the state to produce an analysis of the remaining ones, the remaining 7,000, and they predict with a 95% confidence level that we don't have any more than 10 lines that will need to replace out of those 7,000 service lines. And that confidence level is enough for KDHE to let us reclassify those unknown lines as non-led, which is a pretty big deal for us. While we still will be doing our due diligence and investigating all those unknowns, it means we're no longer under the same clock for identifying all those lines. We still have a little bit of work left for some of the lines that we've identified as galvanized because galvanized steel and iron lines can pick up lead if there's a lead pipe upstream and we need to be able to verify that those galvanized lines didn't have lead upstream. So, we're going through some of that process right now. I don't think we'll complete all that before we turn in our first inventory, but we will be working on it in the months after that.
And those 10 lines, how long are they? Are they miles long or?
Well, that's the hard, they're not miles long. So, they're, a service line is just from the main to a house. It includes both the public side on the upstream side of the meter and the part between the meter and the house itself. A service line doesn't actually include any of the plumbing inside the house, that's kind of where the EPA has been drawing the line for what they're requiring people to look at. So, we have, we have 17,000 public sides of those service lines and 17,000 private sides. And here's just a quick summary, on both portions, we have zero identified as lead. The ones that are identified as lead on the public water side, we don't have to replace because we never had lead mains, so they're not contaminated. But the 241 down there that are galvanized for the private water side, we're working through that and trying to figure out from various historical information if there ever was a lead water line upstream of those. So, that's our, that's our next big task. And if we find that that galvanized line did have lead upstream, then it qualifies for replacement, which that's the purpose of the loan, is to go through and replace any of either the lead ones or in our case, galvanized ones that were contaminated by lead. So, we did a pre-application back in May and at the time, we thought we'd have about 290 just from a really crude estimate. But again, like I said, now we're looking at just about an estimate of 10, which is significantly less cost to the city. We're still recommending that we go for the full $5.6 million loan amount because for better or worse, we're only going to be able to actually apply against that amount whenever we find water lines we need to replace anyway. So, it's not like we're going to be sitting there with a $5.6 million loan from the beginning anyway. And that's it. So, the resolution is just to approve supplying for that $5.6 million loan from the Kansas Water Fund.
Sounds like very good news.
Yes, yes, it is.
Anybody here that would like to speak in this public hearing? That's why we have these things, so that you can speak your piece if you have opinions or thoughts or... All right.
I got a question for you. How'd you find out which, who's lead? Did you look in the pit and look at the pipe?
We looked in the water reader, water meter vault because there you can see both sides and it's two data points for, we did have, Richard Buller's crews had to go through and clean out some of the pits because they filled, but we were, we were making sure to actually identify the materials on those. And we had a, we, we had a quality check, I think we were backchecking like 1% or 10%. Richard may have to correct me on that, to make sure we were recording the materials correctly on those as well.
On the loan, I can't remember what the interest, how the interest worked out on the loan or if there was a forgiveness amount to it, but are we only going, if we're going to, if we're going to apply for a loan for the 5.6 that we approved for, we'll only use a portion of it, are we only paying interest on the amount we're drawing or are we going to pay, are we going to take the entire amount just on the portion we're drawing?
That's right, and there is 49% forgiveness. So, while we still haven't yet discussed what kind of a replacement plan we actually want to have for the city, at least this way, we would have a potential pool with basically half forgiveness out there that we'd have to use as leverage for whatever approach we decide.
There's no financial drawback for go ahead and filling it out for the full 5.6 even if we just draw a hundred thousand?
Yeah, and I mean, there's a, there's a whole pool of cities who had to go through the same exercise we did, I think to PCAST for 73 million, something like that. Obviously, much bigger city, but none of us have any idea where these water lines actually are yet.
I'm delighted that this didn't turn into the worst-case scenario, the 5.6 million. And I think at the beginning, when this was first presented to us, it was one of those, we were creating an unknown for property owners because, I think you weren't, I don't know that you were with us yet.
I don't think I was here yet, yeah.
Because the repair could have fallen onto the property owner to pay for and this sounds like we'll have plenty of funds to fully fund any repairs that we might find.
Yes, there is, there is one part to this too that, that is important and one of the reasons why we're actually pushing to get the loan application in now. There's some indication that because the state knows the money pool will eventually run out, subsequent years, the loans won't be for both lead and galvanized, they'll just be for lead. So, if we get the application now, we can use that money to replace galvanized lines as well if there ones that require it. Because while, while for this tranche of loans, there was actually more money available than the amount requested, as cities get online and finish their inventories, that's probably going to diminish pretty quickly. And since our problem is entirely galvanized, I'd rather we be able to apply the money to that.
All right, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
I'll second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, next item. Any questions? This is more of a formality now.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the completion of the loan application and the execution and delivery of the loan documents and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, next item.
Thank you all, everyone.
Thank you, Evan.
For B, receive update from Chamber of Commerce regarding economic development strategic plan.
Counsel, could we do C first? I believe Deborah's, she's on the way, she's just running behind.
Okay, certainly.
Consider approval of bid for demolition of the atrium and convention center.
Good evening, council, Matt Williams, Director of Community Development. I'm here to provide bid results on the asbestos abatement and demolition of the atrium hotel and convention center. As you know, at our August 20th meeting, council passed a resolution finding the building to be dangerous and unsafe and directed the structure to be repaired or removed. And on October 1st, you heard an update on the status of the project and with no visible progress being made and no cash bond from the owner, council voted unanimously to move forward with the demolition of the structure. On August 27th, the city released a request for bids for the project. In addition to the asbestos removal and demo, the project includes hauling away all of the contents, all of the signage, all of the demolition material, removing all of the concrete, the footings within the limits of the structure, cutting and capping the utilities and backfilling the area to grade with filter. Asbestos abatement is required to begin within 45 days and demolition work is required to be complete within 120 days of the end of asbestos abatement. The city received seven bids for the project, which are listed in the staff report. In the course of staff's review of the bids, we took into account the bidder's understanding of the project, past experience, the thoroughness of their submittal and reference checks. This due diligence review resulted in Kansas Concrete LLC being recommended as a preferred bidder with a second lowest bid at $865,000. The city plans to bond for the project. I do want to point out that at no point in this process will the city own the building or the property. The structure has been declared unsafe and dangerous and the next step is to go through the demolition process. Staff is recommending city council accept the bid by Kansas Concrete and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Do you have any answering questions?
Can we walk through the process on how the cost will be, the city will handle the cost of this and apply that cost to the property as a lien, is that the way I understand it?
Yeah, so we will, you know, pay the $865,000 and assess that to the property as a special assessment, which will go on the taxes for the property owner and if that's not paid, I believe it's three years than the counting since it took tax, so.
And would the city be the primary or the secondary lien holder on that compared to the mortgage from the bank?
Remains to be seen.
Or, we're going to find out?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, first or second's probably not going to matter because you're not going to get a bid that brings it all back.
I understand. Just curious about the process.
Anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Happy to hear from the folks, yes?
I will say, representatives with the recommended contractor are here in attendance.
I have some questions about some of the material. But I have a question for Mr. Brown. So, just to kind of like play out the scenario of what that process is when we put the lien on. So, we put the lien on it for 30 days, he has 30 days to pay it and then it officially goes on as the tax lien. Well, it's a five-year term before it goes to sheriff's auction, so.
I think it's three. I think it's three for commercial, five for residential.
Oh, okay, that makes more sense. I was going to say the county told me three, but that was, that was residential. So, okay, so it goes to auction and let's say that it, the lowest bid is nowhere near covering the mortgage or the, the demo cost. We get nothing from that cash, from that auction, right?
Possibly, yes.
Okay. And no other lien holders would get anything above, like they're going to pay whatever to the mortgage, right? So, in that case, in that scenario, this does fall back to the residents of Hutch, de facto falls on them. If the property is demoed and the owner sends it or has a successful sale, and let's say that the price, the sale price is $2 million, I'm just making up numbers here, but let's say it's $2 million and it's enough to cover whatever he owes the bank plus our portion, the 865, we would get paid.
Correct.
Would that be a drawn-out court process or is that automatic within like the sale? Like, I've, I've never sold a commercial property, so is it?
Well, it's, it's the same like any sale, if they're going to clear the sale, they have to clear the liens off in order to deliver title to the property.
And there's no way that, so regardless, if the property is sold, then there's going to be a lien and it has to be satisfied. And so, who pays that? Mr. Joseph or the buyer?
Comes out of the proceeds from the buyer.
Okay. Well, and then, then the residents of Hutch don't pay for it in a way, so, okay. Is there any scenarios that we're not thinking of?
No.
Okay.
Those were pretty much thinking of before we ever got to this point of demolition for the property. You know, there were negotiations, there were attempts, attempts at redevelopment of the property itself, just nothing came to fruition. All those have basically been tried. This is a last resort, we don't, it's not the first thing that the city goes to, but the time has come that, we just can't wait any longer. You've heard the citizens come before you and, and what a terrible eyesore that is and it's, it's a danger also, a danger for our fire and police and, and for the citizens in the area.
There's a liability cost if we don't do anything with it at this point.
And is there any environmental risk after the asbestos is evaded? Like, we're not causing any harm like to the environment, to the land that the neighbors should be concerned of or future property owners should be concerned of?
I don't believe, I'm not probably relevant to answer that, but I mean, we did seek out if there, if we needed to do anything for the black mold on the inside of the structure. We're told from our, the environmental firm, that the abatement was the only issue and as long as that's removed according to KDHE requirements, I think the property should be good.
Council member, if you look at the faces of Kansas Concrete back here and they're shaking their heads no for you.
I got a question, doesn't he owe us $4,000 for, wasn't, doesn't he owe us $4,000?
That's already been assessed to his taxes, so, yes.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, questions? If, if there are none, I would call for motion on this matter.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid of Kansas Concrete and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Back to B.
Good evening, council, thank you for your flexibility in my arrival. When Enrico invited me to come this evening, I said, "We have a few things going on," one of which was our chamber board meeting and there was a very important conversation going on that did not wrap up in time for me to be here timely, so thank you. The reason that I'm here tonight is not really with a formal ask of any sort, but to remind you that you have representation on the chamber and Greater Hutch's Economic Development Advisory Council and that council was formed a number of years ago out of kind of a new contract for economic development that the chamber and the city and county have all been multi-parties to. First began in 2017 with what was called the Hutch Rising Strategy and then in 2022, we've embarked in this last three years on the Reno Rising Economic Development Strategy for our county and our communities. And that Economic Development Advisory Council has staff sitting on it as well as the mayor sits on it. And one of the topics at this last meeting was looking at a future strategy of coming up with a combined kind of holistic countywide economic development strategic plan for the future. And I, and it embodies more than just Greater Hutch or the city or the county alone. The reason for it is that we all have action plans, you all have a comprehensive plan that your staff is carrying out every day, the county does as well. We have a role in economic development, but we're not the only one that has a role in economic development for the community. Startup Hutch represents the entrepreneurship pillar of economic development and we work every day on retention, expansion and recruitment of companies as well as workforce development and community capacity building. Your own staff has community development staff that also work on issues like housing and infrastructure and, and I would leave someone out if I went through the list. But the Community Foundation has stepped up in a bigger way about the role of philanthropy and how philanthropy drives economic development. And all of us are at the table, working on action plans independently, all with goals and usually they are common goals, but we thought it might be time, we've heard this kind of bubble up to the surface through a few conversations, that it might be time to work on a new countywide economic development strategy. So, that was the topic at the EDAC this last week and Enrico asked that I come and just speak. We get nothing from that cash, from that auction, right?
Possibly, yes.
Okay. And no other lien holders would get anything above, like they're gonna pay whatever to the mortgage, right? So in that case, in that scenario, this does fall back to the residents of Hutch. De facto falls on them. If the property is demoed and the owner sends it, or has a successful sale, and let's say that the price, the sale price is two million, I'm just making up numbers here, but let's say it's two million and it's enough to cover whatever he owes the bank plus our portion, the eight-sixty-five, we would get paid.
Correct.
Would that be a drawn-out court process, or is that automatic within like the sale? Like, I've never sold a commercial property, so is it?
Well, it's, it's the same like any sale. If they're gonna clear the sale, they have to clear the liens off in order to deliver title to the property.
And there's no way that, so regardless, if the property is sold, then there's gonna be a lien and it has to be satisfied. And so who pays that? Mr. Joseph or the buyer?
Comes out of the proceeds from the buyer.
Okay. Well, and then, then the residents of Hutch don't pay for it, in a way. So, okay. Is there any scenarios that we're not thinking of?
No.
Okay.
Those were pretty much thinking of before we ever got to this point of demolition for the property. You know, there were negotiations, there were attempts, attempts at redevelopment of the property itself, just nothing came to fruition. All those have basically been tried. This is a last resort. We don't, it's not the first thing that the city goes to, but the time has come that we just can't wait any longer. You've heard the citizens come before you and, and what a terrible eyesore that is, and it's, it's a danger also, a danger for our fire and police and, and for the citizens in the area.
There's a liability cost if we don't do anything at this point.
And is there any environmental risk after the asbestos is evaded? Like, we're not causing any harm, like, to the environment, to the land, that the neighbors should be concerned of or future property owners should be concerned of?
I don't believe, I'm not probably-
Any more than it just sitting there, rotting?
Relevant to answer that, but, I mean, we did seek out if there, if we needed to do anything for the black mold on the inside of the structure. We're told from our, the environmental firm, that the abatement was the only issue, and as long as that's removed according to KTHE requirements, I think the property should be good.
Council member, if you look at the faces of Kansas Concrete back here, and they're shaking their heads no for you.
Okay.
I got a question. Doesn't he owe us four thousand dollars for, doesn't he owe us four thousand dollars?
That's already been assessed to his taxes.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, questions? If, if there are none, I would call for motion on this matter.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid of Kansas Concrete and authorize the mayor to sign. I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Darden?
Yes.
Makers?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Back to B.
Thank you for your flexibility in my arrival. When Enrico invited me to come this evening, I said, "We have a few things going on," one of which was our chamber board meeting, and there was a very important conversation going on that did not wrap up in time for me to be here timely, so thank you. The reason that I'm here tonight is not really with a formal ask of any sort, but to remind you that you have representation on the Chamber and Greater Hutch's Economic Development Advisory Council, and that council was formed a number of years ago out of kind of a new contract for economic development that the Chamber and the city and county have all been multi-parties to. First began in 2017 with what was called the Hutch Rising Strategy, and then in 2022, we've embarked in this last three years on the Reno Rising Economic Development Strategy for our county and our communities. And that Economic Development Advisory Council has staff sitting on it, as well as the mayor sits on it, and one of the topics at this last meeting was looking at a future strategy of coming up with a combined kind of holistic countywide economic development strategic plan for the future. And I, and it embodies more than just Greater Hutch or the city or the county alone. The reason for it is that we all have action plans. You all have a comprehensive plan that your staff is carrying out every day, the county does as well. We have a role in economic development, but we're not the only one that has a role in economic development for the community. Startup Hutch represents the entrepreneurship pillar of economic development, and we work every day on retention, expansion, and recruitment of companies, as well as workforce development and community capacity building. Your own staff has community development staff that also work on issues like housing and infrastructure, and, and I would leave someone out if I went through the list. But the Community Foundation has stepped up in a bigger way about the role of philanthropy and how philanthropy drives economic development. And all of us are at the table, working on action plans independently, all with goals, and usually they are common goals, but we thought it might be time, we've heard this kind of bubble up to the surface through a few conversations, that it might be time to work on a new countywide economic development strategy. So that was the topic at the EDAC this last week, and Enrico asked that I come and just speak to the council and kind of put that on the table for you all to think about, so that we don't lose sight of all of our individual roles in, in this work.
Do you have any questions for Deborah?
When you first walked in with that folder, I thought we were in for a long night.
Well, I brought that as a reminder that we all have plans. We all have in-depth plans, and, and in one of the, we have a Monday Economic Development meeting with your staff, that my staff meet with them, and they talk about project work, but we all work under these plans, the comprehensive plan you all adopted in 2017 predates my time here in Hutch, it predates many of your time sitting on city council, and, and those plans are written at a point in time, and they look, they take a look back and they take a look forward, but a lot has changed in the last seven years. And so I use it as a reminder, like I brought it back up to refresh my own memory on the things that are in our independent city and county comprehensive plans and how our work relates to it. And, you know, we can go through it if you'd like, but I, I feel like part of you, and, and most of you weren't on council when it was adopted, but at the time, you know, we were at a certain place in our economy, but a lot has changed. We're working on some big things together in the realm of, you know, a new industrial park for the future that you all annexed in in December that will lead to growth. We also have really put our workforce development program on a, on a higher plateau to try to focus on workforce development for the future, making sure that the young people growing up here know about careers here, and that they're preparing themselves for a career that, that could land them right back here in Reno County when they are of a working age. But a lot of those things weren't really well-developed in those previous comprehensive plans. So I think if we, if we walk down this path to kind of do a self-assessment, was what I would kind of call this new strategic plan, it would make sure that the goals we're all setting are in alignment, so that all the parties working are, are then working in tandem, pulling on the same rope together.
Do you see this as being kind of its own task force, or do you see it being kind of a re-vamp of a few things going on? Because we get a lot of people that are on multiple groups within our community-
Right.
-that are already kind of not organized, intertwining, but they're intertwining in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah.
So you kind of see it being its own?
I think you could take a subset of the group that is the Economic Development Advisory Council and a subset of the group that's been working on the Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Plan, and, and maybe some of your staff, and, you know, maybe an elected official, a staff member, someone from the Chamber, someone from our EDAC, someone from Community Foundation and Startup Hutch. I, I kind of, yeah, a task force, a working group of some sort. The timeline I laid out was that I wanted to discuss this with the governing bodies this month. If we're all in agreement, we can kind of come up with a scope document that we all agree on what the scope of this plan would look like and who those parties should be at the table overseeing it, probably issuing an RFP for services sometime in November, vetting possible firms that do this kind of work, and then we could embark on 2025 together. But I would say a small working group or a task force. We don't, nobody needs one more thing to do, but I think we're all in this work anyway together. It would just be a decision-making body to guide this specific piece, yes.
I think John just volunteered himself for it.
I think Stacy.
I'll let you find amongst yourselves on that. Greg pretty religiously attends the EDAC meeting, so he's, maybe he's been your self-appointed person to this task. I don't know.
Oh, no, I will delegate.
If he needs one more thing to do.
I will delegate.
No, it's, but it is important, and there is a lot of, it's not only making sure we're all going in the same direction, it's also making sure we're not doubling up on efforts and not spending time we don't need to on things if someone else is taking charge of it.
I will say the group in the EDAC meeting was for this. They, they agreed full-heartedly, because I think especially with our, our new industrial parks, South, South, South Hutch, so.
What are you looking at for governing bodies? Hutchinson, South Hutch, the county?
Those that are contributing right now to our economic development work are those bodies, yes, but we also work closely with Haven and Bueller. They both have part-time economic development staff. They're, they just have a new staff person at Haven, and they are looking in a little bit of a different direction in Bueller, so I can't say whether they want to be on board, but at a minimum, those that are kind of working on the big picture of infrastructure and housing and workforce, most definitely, and those that already have, you know, dollars invested in this right now, which I think Reno County would have obviously a seat on the task force, and they, through their investment in what we do, kind of invest for the whole.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well-
So no specific ask tonight, just if this is the general direction and consensus, we'll work with staff on a proposal for you.
I, I think that'd be fine.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Deborah.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we'll move on to our executive session.
Motion to recess and adjourn the session.
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. Okay, it'll be until six-thirty?
I move, what, to recess and to executive session until six-thirty.
I'll second.
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Darden? Yes.
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 Did you get the whistles, please?
I did, but I stopped that one.
Grant.
Yes?
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Meggers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Thank you.